Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for the Morro Bay Planning Commissioner, Commission. At this point, we have enough people here for a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order. Let's stop for a moment of silence here. Please stand, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. Well, if the community can't see, we've got a couple of visitors in here tonight. They're going to enliven our discussion. Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to welcome our newest Commissioner, Jesse Barron, and welcome him to the Planning Commission, and everybody will give him a fond hello. Okay, normally, at this time, we have a public comment period. This is the time for the public to come forward.
Planning Commissioner announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that again. So, we'll -- okay, do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Okay, I think Jesse was the one that did it. So, okay, then we move on to the public comment period. Thank you, Scott. Okay, this is for the items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So, come forward, state your name, and let us -- you've got three minutes.
My name is Clark Kaler. I'm just going to share a few observations with the Planning Commission and this residence in Morro Bay. One is to say that I think that the streets and I don't really think the cars are doing anybody any service, or the Blacktop is doing anybody any service in downtown Morro Bay. I live in San Francisco, and I think that this place is beautiful enough and amazing enough to gravitate over time towards eliminating cars at all in the areas where you can walk to the ocean, which is really the reason people come here. And I do own a couple of commercial properties, and I certainly would be more than willing to allow the streets in front of me to turn into no parking zones. I believe ultimately, it will be the highest and best use. Morro Bay has so much latent potential, and it would be a perfect place to start thinking along those lines. So, I would suggest that instead of creating any more mucked up things, that would have to be unmucked to go to that direction ultimately through reasonable means. Obviously, we have to protect our businesses, but hey, there are ways to do that, and I hope that we all think in that direction. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have some?
I didn't know we were going to have similar visions here. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Rigmore, resident of Morro Bay. I'm happy to see Mr. Sadowski still up there. We need a little excitement once in a while. I also want to welcome our newly-elected planner, and I hope he has a good agenda for Morro Bay's future. I understand you will discuss parking problems later on, and my opinion is, just like I've always said, that the only parking problem we have is that too much of our wonderful little city is clogged up with cars. I think the streets should be for people, not for cars, but for people who walk, walk their dogs, bikers, skateboarders, et cetera. That, to me, gives small cities' character a soul and humanity, not cars that pollute smog and stink up our fresh ocean air. This city is small enough to walk just about to everywhere, and we even have a cute red trolley that can shuttle us around. That trolley now drives around mostly empty. At the very least, stop somehow all the workers, employees, employers, owners, et cetera, who hog the streets with their cars parked in front of businesses all day long. Down here at this side of the Embarcadero, they can use the Triangle lot. Maybe downtown, they can rent part of the unused Bank of America lot, et cetera, et cetera. Could be that the future will come up with all kinds of other types of transportations so that cities will be more for people. Morro Bay can be one of all those cities that has already started to implement the walking cities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would like to remind the public that this is for the time for items that are not on the agenda, so if you're here to talk about parking, we'll be getting to that shortly. So, thank you. So, is there anybody else who would like to speak about items that are not on the agenda tonight?
Not used to these things.
Just please state your name first.
My name is Manja Bedikin. I'm also from San Francisco. I'm in Morro Bay every other weekend, I would say. I'm actually quite excited to be here during one of these events. I didn't -- I wasn't expecting here to be on a Tuesday. Normally, on the Mondays, everybody else, I head out. I'm an architect. I live in San Francisco, and I also do -- my specialty is transit, so I do train stations, and that's all I do. It's a very weird field of architecture, but it's what I've been doing the last 15 years or so. I've lived everywhere in the world, pretty much, for a long time. I've lived in Sweden, and this place reminds me a lot of the west coast of Sweden in Beau Huisland, and this is about the only place in California where I've lived, and I've moved from Canada last four years ago, and that you have this mix of Nordic life and the ocean and the bay, and I paddleboard. And so, I really -- the part of Morro Bay that I utilize the most is, I would say, between Beach Street and all the way through The Rock and that whole area. And I would really love that area to be act -- I'm sorry, these guys are distracting me. It's an internet moment here. So, I would really love this whole area to be really activated and alive. I was here a few weeks ago. There was a music festival, and that was great, to see food trucks, to see coffee stands. Every morning, I walk on the T Pier. There was a little guy serving espresso there, you know? Just really, that whole area is very, very vibrant, and everybody flocks down, you know, from Beach Street all the way there. So, to see that whole area activated, and I understand there's a lot of things going on with the power plant site, but to have, you know, some beautiful artwork, some local artists, just like you're doing with the surfboards, just to paint that facade right now as I'm paddleboarding there, just to have some urban activation, that those whole -- all those parking lots hopefully will one day be reinvested with, you know, some function. One example that's really interesting is, I don't know if you guys are aware, but this place called Granville Island in Vancouver, which is an industrial land that Canada Parks took on, where the industrial functions, the fishing functions are still there, but there's a whole lot of local artists and food and a whole lot of things. It's very interesting, in the middle, in the middle of the city there. So, to see some kind of urban activation, to see a mix between the wonderful fishing culture and also services for visitors, that whole area, all the way to The Rock, would be really, really nice. And also, some beautiful art and some activation of that wall there and the stacks, which are industrial heritage. In Montreal, we have these grain elevators. Montreal is the metropolis of grain elevators, and these grain elevators have had video projections on them, just a whole mix. And, you know, this is a place I would love to come back to, you know, for many, many years, and nobody's heard of it yet. Hopefully, people will have heard of it, and, you know, I would like to bring the world. My friend Sophie is here, and I brought her over. She's lived in Spain for eight years, and she's going to be the next one talking. And I'm, you know, trying to get as many people excited about this place as possible. So, you know, you've got a wonderful spot, and, you know, it would be great to bring my friends from all over the world and, you know, have one big party here in Morro Bay. So, you know, I got connections. There's the next one. She's going to --
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Love your enthusiasm.
So, my name is Sophie, and I'm an architect as well. I've worked in heritage conservation for 10 years and lived in different places and just came back from Spain, where I lived for a number of years. I've just discovered this place over the last three days, and I must say, this is an incredible place. Very rarely have seen such a beautiful site, and it's also very authentic, very low-key, very slow, very tranquil, and in such a beautiful nature. What I would like maybe to see more, I guess, we need to pay attention more to nature and maybe give less importance to cars. I think that the relationship between the city and the site could be reinforced. It's difficult to enjoy the city as a pedestrian. I feel there's very little place to experience the site, to understand its history, to have a better connection with its fishing history. There is a split a little bit between the city and the site. I think with very little effort, we could really try to reconnect the two in a maybe more sensitive way. But again, it's just listen more to the site and give less importance to the cars. The village where I lived in Spain, people would actually park at the entrance of the village, and then they would just walk in the village, and the average age was 65. And so, people actually walked a lot. They felt safe. They exercised. They lived longer, so I think it can only be to the benefit of everyone. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who would wish to speak to items that are not on the agenda?
Good evening. My name is Jan Dergerabedian, and I just wanted to comment on mainly Main Street. Years ago, we owned Two Dogs Coffee Company, and at that time, we had, especially around the holidays, but even not on the holidays, we had the trees were lit up and beautiful and inviting for people to want to come. Right now, if you go down Main Street in the evening, it's dreary and people -- it's not inviting. Also, the trees, which have been kind of an issue this year, the limbs are falling, and people can get hurt. And I don't know if those trees are trimmed, or they're going to be trimmed, or what the issue is with those trees, but it seems that we should take notice because if that falls on cars or people, then there's going to be a liability. I don't know those -- what kind of trees they are, what the name of those trees are, but they could cause a larger issue. But I'm hoping that this year, especially around the holidays, we'd get the lights back maybe on the trees. It's really pretty and makes it nice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is this -- do we have any more public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comment at this time. Scott, a couple of questions that came up. Tree trimming and lights on the trees.
So, we do have -- obviously, we have lights on the trees on Morro Bay Boulevard. I know there's been some discussion more recently with the Office of the Deputy City Manager in looking into what could be done there, maybe partnering with the Chamber or something along those lines, to go out and put lights back up in the trees. One of the issues when we went out there is they didn't use commercial-grade lighting. So, you have a lot of -- and then folks, some of the lighting failed, and they put other lighting up that didn't match, mismatched lighting that's over there, and that was sort of one of the issues as well. I don't know where they've come out on that. I'd have to talk to Connie. He's our Deputy City Manager, and he was the one that was kind of working on that for a while, so I'm not exactly sure where that stands. I know there was some conversations going on toward that end between he and Public Works, so I'm not sure what the status is on that. We do have a tree trimming program. We try to trim trees about every three years. There's tree trimming money in the budget that we allocate every year to go through and trim the trees, you know, along our major streets. They're usually every three, between every three and five years, depending on, you know, funding, so that's kind of -- and then need. Sometimes we have -- we always have some money in there for emergencies when we have, you know, storms and that type of thing. We have to go clean up stuff, but on a regular basis, they are trimmed every three to five years, depending on the cycle. I know they were trying to reduce it from the five to the three, but then we were, again, running into budgetary issues, so I'm not exactly sure where it stands right now.
Okay, and we've had some heavy wind events this year, so I'm sure the emergency budget has been stretched.
I would imagine that to be the case, yeah. I think you're probably correct, so.
Okay, and to answer a earlier comment, too, one of the programs that we're debating is to try to introduce a section of the Embarcadero to possibly go to pedestrian-only. So, we are looking at different ideas, but it's, you know, this town moves kind of slow sometimes, so that's kind of the way it is, you know, why it's as quaint as this is. But thank you for everybody, everybody for your comments so far. They've been great. So, moving on, we have no presentations scheduled, and, you know, now we'll -- at this point, we have the consent calendar. Do we have anybody that wants to pull any of the items on the consent calendar for special preview?
I was going to make a comment on the minutes from October 3rd. On the third page, I know they're just synopsis minutes, summary minutes, but toward the bottom there, it's talking about Commissioner Sadowski, and it talks about a food dialogue, and I think it meant to be full dialogue in that one. That one's a little --
Which page was it on? I'm sorry?
I think it's the third page on the minutes from October 3rd. If you go down to Planning Commissioner comments, it's the -- you've got the URL, and then Commissioner Engraffi, and then Commissioner Sadowski, and the last sentence there has food dialogue. I know it's dinnertime when we have the meetings, but --
We will correct that.
Okay, do we have anything else on the consent calendar? Do we have a motion then?
I move we accept the minutes as amended in the tracking sheet.
Do we get a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passed unanimously?
I believe I have to abstain since I wasn't here.
Yeah. Do we have -- with one abstention. Four yeses, one abstention. So, we have no public hearings tonight, but we do have one item on new business, and that's C1. It's the Parking and Striping Plan Improvement Discussion for Possible Recommendation to Council. So, Scott, you're up.
So, if this seems familiar and something that we might have went over before, it's because we have. We've -- that's good.
I guess we could just go to cat videos till you get these, get this corrected. To the public out there, we have that probably aren't seeing this on the TV. There are two kittens in here that are turning this place into a playground, so I think they might have got into the wiring, too.
It's going to be a second till there's some batteries.
Okay. Do you want to start the discussion on it, or give us a background maybe, or while we're waiting?
So, yeah, I'll give you a little background, maybe a little history. That's probably good while they're working on that. So, the 2000 -- we have a parking management plan from 2007, adopted by Council Resolution 4807, and we haven't implemented much of it. I mean, it was adopted back in 2007, so that was leading into the recession, so the city didn't have funds to do the implementation portion of it, so there wasn't much that was done. We did implement some of the wayfinding signage. I don't know that we did a great job on that. Hence the reason our Economic Development Strategic Plan and Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan suggest that we redo that plan, and so we'll be doing that in the coming months. And then it also came up with some trolley route changes that the city did implement, so we did do those two things, you know, back in, you know, very shortly thereafter adopting the document. We have, in recent times, probably in the last couple of years, we've added about 200 parking spaces with the acquisition of the Triangle Lot adjacent to Dynegy. And with the acquisition of the property where the Distazio's restaurant sits, it also came with that parking lot, and so we repaved that and striped it, picked up about 50 or so spaces, so I know there's about 150 in the Triangle Lot, so it's about a total of 200 right now. And then, you know, right out here on Market, we restriped Market Street and added perpendicular parking, which used to be parallel, since we added some parking spaces in that location. And we did add, and we did re-stripe much of the downtown to include the parking tees to delineate the parking spaces. That helped add some capacity to the streets as well, so we've done all of those types of things to this point to sort of improve parking situations. But there still are a lot of items that were -- okay, so we're maybe the fourth slide at this point? That one, there we go. Oh, is it working? Oh.
Thank you.
All right, so there are several items, you know, in the document that haven't been implemented, and it speaks to development of a parking page on the city's website, maybe creation of a shared parking program, an employee parking program, addressing delivery trucks down the Embarcadero. We've sort of done that. We have the, you know, we adopted the concept plan that does that, and I'll show you a picture of that, and that was done in January. That went along as part of the Embarcadero Sidewalk Widening and Centennial Parkway project to address -- that plan did address parking of delivery trucks and loading and unloading zones. Implementation of angled parking in the downtown, looking at altering or implementing timed parking, potentially adding paid parking, and then looking, you know, toward public-private partnerships for undeveloped property. We have a lot of undeveloped property in the downtown, probably all aware of it. Had a similar circumstance when I was in Pismo Beach before here, and we did lease vacant land, and one of those pieces of land is still a parking lot for the city, and they leased it from the owner, and they have about, I think it's got probably about 100 and about 100 spaces on it, I think. So, we could do something similar to that. If you turned it into a paid lot, it would pay to have it paved and maintained and that type of thing, so those opportunities are available out there, and it is something internally we've been discussing about approaching some of the property owners that have undeveloped land inside the city, cities downtown. So, then, you know, fast forward to January 2016, the council sort of reviewed the parking management plan and gave some direction to staff, and that was to kind of go through it and see if it made sense to implement angled parking in the downtown. Again, look at addressing that, the commercial loading and unloading zones down the Embarcadero, and I think we're another step closer to making that actually happen, which is fantastic. And then do some research into the timed and paid parking options, and then bring this to the boards, that's you, and get input. And so, this was part of that. You'll probably also remember in July of 2016, I did bring this to you, and we had a fairly lengthy conversation about potential parking improvements that could be made. The Planning Commission at the time did not favor any of the restriping options that were shown in the parking management plan. I showed you four. And I think the sentiment then was we really don't have a parking problem. Perhaps we have a walking problem, and so that was kind of where that went. The commission was also interested in addressing the Embarcadero loading and unloading zone. We were starting the planning process for our, the Centennial Parkway and Embarcadero Sidewalk Widening project back then, so those conversations were kind of ongoing at that point, and we since, you know, this council since adopted that concept plan, and so we can move to potentially creating some of those loading and unloading zones, but would probably need to come with some offset in the form of adding some additional parking down there to address losing those spaces, and so one of the things we'll talk about this evening. And then, again, the commission had interest in enforcing some of our timed parking areas, and I'll show you some maps of where those are at and what those timeframes are. And then with an idea, potentially to, you know, take a look at options for implementing paid parking in some areas. Concerns that were noted by the Planning Commission back in 2016, I don't think you favored the option that I showed you of angled parking that was back in. No one seemed to like that much. There was some question about, hey, what's the yield of the proposal you're bringing in front of us? I didn't have the numbers on that. I have them now. One of the reasons I'm back in front of you. And then there was some concern about how bikes would interact if we put the angled parking in, specifically on Morro Bay Boulevard, and I'll speak to that later, too. This was the plan that comes out of that Embarcadero Widening Project. I think this does. It does, so that's one of the areas where you would create a loading zone. That would be recreatable up and down the street there, so we could put them, you know, one every block or so, and so that would get, that would, you know, relieve us of the issue that we have out there when you get at noon, when we have several, you know, trucks loading and unloading food and whatnot parked in the middle of the street, and you have to drive around them. It's -- it doesn't make it very comfortable to drive down the Embarcadero when that's happening. So, after going to the Planning Commission, we realized that we were supposed to bring this also to the Public Works Advisory Board, so we brought it to PWA, and PWA have a different take on it. They said, go implement the angled parking solution, so different take than the Planning Commission had. They also said, hey, why don't you consider implementation and enforcement of our existing timed parking zones that we have? And they were also interested in maybe looking at paid parking solutions. So, those, that second bullet there was very similar to that of the Planning Commission from a position standpoint. They noted concerns. They had concerns with that backend angled parking. They didn't like that much. They weren't sure about how people would react if we used sharrows, like maybe on Morro Bay Boulevard or something like that, because we don't have a dedicated bike lane on Morro Bay Boulevard. You probably all know that. And then there was questions about paid parking that they raised. Is it sustainable? What's the cost to enforce? And then, if we start enforcing either the timed or paid parking, then where do employees park? And so, valid concerns, all things that we'll talk about in greater detail moving forward. So, here are, I'm going to show you the four scenarios that were in the parking management plan that we talked about last time. This was putting some angled parking in on Morro Bay Boulevard between Main and Monterey, so you see the angled parking at the top of the diagram there. So, it's only on one side, and then you maintain the parallel parking on the south side. Here's two other options on, one on Monterey between Harbor and Morro Bay Boulevard, and then one on Main, also between Harbor and Morro Bay Boulevard. And then here's one, an option for center lane parking, and that was on Market between Dunes and Harbor. And these were sort of four examples that you could recreate in other areas in town. That was the idea behind that, these cross-sections in the plan. And so, again, one of the issues that came out of this was, hey, Scott, how many parking spaces we get if we do this? Because we're going to be drastically or dramatically altering four streets. And the answer to that question is 17 spaces. That was not fantastic, and I was getting ready to take this in June to the City Council, and I said, well, we need to do the math, because both the Planning Commission and Public Works Advisory Board, PWA, asked for that. Let's do the math. We did the math. It was 17 spaces. I said, I'm not taking this to City Council. And so, we had to start kind of over and rethink this, like, hey, how can we get the best yield, you know, and do it in a manner that probably makes sense? you know, and do it in a manner that probably makes sense, or most makes sense? And so we looked at Morro Bay Boulevard, really between Napa and Moro Street, and I'll show you a diagram that, you know, that shows these on a map. And then looked at Market Street between Harbor and Pacific, and then that area of Main between Harbor and Morro Bay Boulevard. The yield in those areas, for those three streets, is between 43 and 45 spaces. That's pretty good bang for your buck. I think that makes the plan worthwhile to go do, and it's almost the same cost as it was to do the other four streets. So it's very similar in cost to those. Addressing the conflict that was noted with bikes by both the planning commission and PWAAB, again, I pointed this out a minute ago, Morro Bay Boulevard and Market do not include dedicated bike lanes. So we could use charos in those instances. Morro Bay Boulevard has all the stop signs on it, so cars are not driving very fast down it anyway. And most folks that, you know, want to traverse that area will move over to Pacific or Harbor anyway, because they don't want to go through the stop signs. And so our main bike lanes are noted on Moro and Harbor and Pacific. And I have a map that shows all this that I'll show you in a second. So here's the map. You have the Morro Bay Boulevard kind of there in the middle, and it shows, shows the parking running, running down the street there from Napa to Moro. We don't have it between Moro and Market, so there's a gap right here that we're not proposing to do it, because there's some driveways over there that would create conflicts. And basically, you only get a yield of one or two spaces, so it's not worth doing. And then you have perpendiculars. We've angled here and angled on Main, and then we have perpendicular here along Market. That perpendicular parking along Market, if we could do some good directional signage, could offset some of the parking spaces that we might lose down on the Embarcadero by putting it loading in the unloading zones. So we would implement charos. The picture here, even though it's in shadows, shows charos being used with angled parking in conjunction with angled parking. That's the way we could look on Morro Bay Boulevard. And then that's just what the charo diagram looks like on the right. We also looked at timed parking. So in the downtown, we have two-hour timed parking, and a lot of it's signed. On the Embarcadero, we have three-hour parking. Most of it's green-curved, and there's only a few signs. So we also went out and did a survey of where all the signs are and what kind of shape they're in, because we haven't enforced it for so long, no one's really gone out and looked at these. And so we mapped all of them and kind of gave them a category, categorized them as what kind of shape they're in. You see bad, bent, blocked. Blocked meaning there's something in front of the sign, so you can't read it, so you don't know that it's a timed parking space. And then whether they're fading and then need to be replaced, or whether they're in good condition. And then the green line notes painted curbs, and I'll show you a diagram that has this on it here in a second. So timed parking, you have the two-hour in the yellow, and the three-hour down on the Embarcadero in the green. And then the next one, I think, shows the location of all the signs. So you see the location of all the signs in the different colors. You have red ones and orange ones and green ones. And there's only about four signs left down on the Embarcadero, because the city, when it decided to stop enforcing the timed parking, pulled the signs out down there, because it was creating, you know, angst amongst our visitors that were parking down there. So we removed it. So if we were going to go through and start enforcing, we would need to put signage back up down that location. It's kind of the point to be taken away from this. And in the area in the downtown, we'd have to go through, and the signs that are blocked that you can't see, we'd have to replace those. The signs that are in poor shape, we'd have to replace those. It's just sort of kind of getting an idea and an inventory of, you know, where the signs are, are, do we need to add more, that type of thing. And there's a, I'll point out, there's also a little bit of a timed parking area over by City Hall over there that we mapped on here as well. Paid parking, this is discussed in the parking management plan. In 2007, it determined that we didn't really have a parking issue, and so said it probably wasn't necessary to do this. We only have a few days out of the year in times, in short windows where the demand is fairly high. But the parking management plan does recognize paid parking, or even enforcement of timed parking, as a means by which you can move employees where you want them, as opposed to parking in front of the storefronts. You can move them to the fringe by implementing paid or timed parking enforcement. And then it can move folks out of the, it can create turnover in the more heavily used areas, and then push again parking to the fringe, the folks that are going to stay around longer, because you can have paid parking and then free parking at the fringe. And so people will park out there if they want to hang out for a while, but maybe if they just want to go into a shop, back they'll pay the fee to go in there. And then again, the note basically is what I just said, is it can serve, by doing one of the two, can serve to create turnover in your higher utilized areas, and then to move employees out of those areas. There's enforcement issues with doing timed and/or paid parking. If you're going to do it effectively, you need to do it seven days a week. We only have two part-time code enforcement officers. They work five days a week, but they only work partial days, five days a week. They don't work all day. They typically don't work on weekends unless it's a busy or a holiday weekend, and sometimes I have them here for those, if we have events going on or that type of thing. If we were going to do it, we probably need to consider removing two of the blocks where it's considered timed parking on Morro Bay Boulevard, so that we could have some area to push employees out so they could park there over time. We'd probably, if we really wanted to solve this and go down the, either the enforcement piece of it, or go and have, for either paid or just direct enforcement, we'd probably have to add two additional code enforcement officers to cover the seven days a week. Or you could do, probably, there's a cheaper method where we could hire four to six dedicated part-time parking officers. They're cheaper, so you don't have to have a full code enforcement officer do that type of thing. The cost, depending on how you would do it, would probably be between $100 to $150,000 to do that. That doesn't include program costs, and if we started, you know, hiring that many employees, we'd probably have to hire a manager, too. And so I was kind of thinking about that before I came over here this evening, and that might add as much as another $100,000 to the, to the cost, because I don't know that we could manage that number of folks with our current staffing level, because I don't have any other managers other than one, and that's Cindy, who's our senior planner. So we would have to look into that and probably hire one person to sort of manage that staff there, that division, really. So questions for you this evening on this specific issue. Do we want to implement angled parking? So I would also note that as part of the general plan, so what's happened between now and the last time we met, is, you know, we've had a lot of outreach and a lot of input from both the Economic Development Strategic Plan and the stakeholder interviews we did for that, the Downtown and Waterfront Strategic Plan and the stakeholder interviews we did for that, and the overall general plan update. And there has been, there has been some expression of a desire to increase parking in the downtown. We've got that from several of the business owners. So there is a desire there to do that. So I would ask if you're interested in doing that. All are part of what I've shown you. It's kind of all on the table. What do you think about use of charos to address the bike and car issue, maybe on Morro Bay Boulevard specifically? Are there other issues that you have? Should we implement timed parking enforcement on the Embarcadero, in the downtown, both? How do we do it? Do we enforce it just with the staff that we have, five days a week? You know, and realizing that's code enforcement officers doing that, and they, you know, mostly their days are filled with dealing with code enforcement stuff, so I don't know how effective they would be, you know, enforcing the parking, because you have to loop back through several times a day to do it effectively. You know, do we add more code enforcement officers? Or do we add paid parking then to pay for some of those folks? Because I don't think we're going to be able to add employees without some means to pay for them. I'd like to get your input and thoughts on that. And if we're going to implement paid parking, where do you want to do that at? What do you think? We can stop here, and we can talk about all these things. The next piece goes into the in-lu policies, and there's a few questions after that, and I can just go through it all, and then we can run back through these if you want. It's kind of up to you.
Why don't we get public comment at this point?
Okay.
Then we can give it to the board. So do we have any, anybody in the, I'll open the floor to public comment. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on this item? Come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Susan Stewart. I am a business owner on Morro Bay Boulevard, a resident, and also chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee. And I have a few things to say about parking. And it's really interesting listening to all the comment about just get the cars off the street, maybe an ideal situation. I do think if you're getting cars off the street, you have to have a place that the cars are going to be. So that works when you have lots, when you have places that cars can park and then walk from there into businesses. I've seen places where parking is all behind businesses. But that's talking about redesigning the whole town. So realistically, there are times we have a parking problem, there are times there's no problem at all, but I think we're looking to revitalize our economy and have a parking problem. We really want a big problem. And there are days when I know for my business I have a problem. I have people who will tell me, I drove around, I couldn't find anywhere to park. You know, I decided to come back another day. I would totally be in support of the diagonal parking, and especially in the areas that you mentioned, Scott. I think we could work with that. I understand the issues with bicycles and skateboards as well, although we tend to see them on the sidewalks on Morro Bay Boulevard. I don't see cyclists in the street. They're mostly on our sidewalks, which is a whole other issue. I would also support having meters in selected areas. I would do that on Morro Bay Boulevard, on Main Street, and on the Embarcadero. So just on those sort of main areas where you really want there to be some traffic flow, because they're right in front of the businesses, and you want to keep that moving. I would suggest that the side streets in the downtown area, so say Monterey, maybe Napa, although Napa has some businesses on it, not have the controlled parking, so that might be a space for the business owners and employees to park. Let's see. Paid parking, da-da-da-da-da. Parking meters are expensive, that's one thing I've heard. So I don't know how you deal with that. Also, our signs, at least some of them, do say that there is no parking, or two-hour parking between certain hours excluding Sundays and holidays. This is a tourist town. Sundays and holidays are when you have a lot of people here. So in a way, I would change up all of those signs and freshen them up and make them bright and new if you're going to have that kind of regulation on the parking. I think that might be it. And good luck. I know it's a sticky problem, and I certainly agree that we'd all like to see those cars maybe off the streets, maybe some more one-way streets, but right now it's California and everybody's got a car, and we've got to have someplace to put them. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Well, since I'm here, and this is a very compelling issue. I do have a bicycle here when I come, and I don't always feel safe in riding my bicycle, because my experience with charos have been that unless there is a definite culture of cohabitation of bicycles and cars in a town, and there is, is very difficult to implement. You know, there's that regulatory three feet that one needs to keep from a bicycle to a car, and it just, just the minute where a driver is distracted, there's a bicycle. People here are not, I haven't seen that many bicycles. There's the people who ride on the one and all, but the streets are wide. I understand there's stop signs, but there is, there's a lot of work to be done in that cohabitation. And for now, unless there's segregation between the bike path and the cars, or there's a way of mitigating the two, maybe narrowing, I understand this is a lot of infrastructure investment that maybe the city's not ready to do, but narrowing of the sidewalks, I, it is, it is very difficult right now to mitigate those two things. And, you know, there have been people who have been hit, either cyclists or skateboarders by cars, and it's not the way the streets are configured right now. It's not always really safe. So I do applaud the initiative for charos. It is, implementing more and more bikes is a great thing, but we really need to think about this culture of the cohabitation and making more friendly. You know, my bike has a basket, and I do do groceries here, and I do walk around, so it'd be, it'd be great to be able to continue and feel safe doing so. And, you know, I do not want to roll on the sidewalk as a bicyclist, nor if I had a skateboard, do so. So, you know, it's, it's a slow change of culture, and it is California, but it is possible to have both, and to encourage the local business to do so. So hopefully, you know, all of this will slowly with time change. And it's a very walkable city, and it's a very, there's a lot of things that we can do here. So I said it, and that was my opinion about parking and striping. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close public comment and bring it back up for questions for Scott. And Joe, you want to start on this, or?
Sorry. I don't think I have any, well, I have one question. With respect to the enforcement officers, I was, you know, I was thinking there's sort of the, for lack of a better word, the terror of enforcement, meaning would it be possible to have a very irregular kind of schedule so that, in effect, no one would ever really know when or when not an enforcement officer was walking around, so that, you know, common sense and reason would dictate that you, more often than not, obey the laws and not park there longer than you should? And that, you know what I mean? So that, so you could do something less than six or seven officers, part-time, something like that.
So my experience with that is that works fine once you put the program in place. Like, people know you're doing it, then it's okay, because they know you're doing it. The problem we would have now is we haven't enforced that parking for a very long time, and so then it would be infrequent that we'd be doing it, and I don't know that the word would get out enough that way. So it, I mean, there's, there's probably a scale between the things that I gave you and said, oh, we could, you know, we could probably, if we hired two, you know, that, you know, if we just hired two part-time folks to do it, and that could be their sole job, and they were really more like parking enforcement folks, not code enforcement folks, then, then they could operate similarly to how our code enforcement officers operate, and they would just deal with those parking things and go around to those places. But we'd have to have enough of that, you know, that they could actively enforce. I mean, it's, that's what I'm saying, it's, we'd have to have enough paid parking or enough parking enforcement going on that it makes sense to have those people here. The existing code enforcement officers would operate just like you said. They would be doing it very infrequently, and I would imagine it would just tend to upset people, because they wouldn't know we're doing it. We wouldn't have the program out there letting folks know. So I don't know. I mean, kind of depends. I mean, we could do it with what we have now, it just, it, I don't know that it would do the things that we wanted to do, and that would be to stop having employees park in front of all the businesses, which is what they do now. They just park one street over. Or down on the Embarcadero, they park all along the Embarcadero, and, or in the parking lots down there, if you're on the north portion of the Embarcadero, Major D area, all the employees park right there. The Triangle Lots are all right there, but none of the restaurants down there make their employees park in that lot. So, yeah, there's issues there.
Okay. Michael, do you have any questions?
The one thing Ms. Stewart asked is something I was interested in. Did we look at the capacity of some of these ideas beyond immediate zones? Did we look, for instance, more up on Monterey past the zones we identified, or on Moro? You mentioned a couple of the places had driveway issues.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if I go back to the, yeah, if I went the right direction. So, where is that one? There it is. So, I mean, we, I was just saying, down in, down in this area of Morro Bay Boulevard, before you get down to Market, between Moro and Market, we proposed to put them there because there were several driveways, and so you don't get a yield there, you know what I mean? Like, we're going to get one, I'm not going to restripe the whole street for one parking space. That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I just wondered if you, if you went past that zone, because the first thing I did was pull the map out and look where you didn't have the green areas. I guess that's, I don't know if you've got this map up there, which is actual one and two, or two and three hour zone, and thing like that, things like that. Maybe not. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, this is more comment, so I'll hold, but I just wondered how far on the map we looked past the...
So we did actually, we did actually, so I had, so our intern, Ryan, you've seen him a couple of times, you know, I had him go out there and take a look at it. Once you get out a couple of streets in either direction, there's no parking issue there. You know, I mean, it, it doesn't, I mean, we could put all these parking spaces on there, but they wouldn't be used. They're far enough out to where those streets, you can drive up them pretty much any time and park on them. In fact, I mean, like, if I'm going to come to Morro Bay on a weekend, and I have friends in town or something, I drive up here and come to Morro Bay, and it's going to be a busy weekend, and it's really nice outside, I'll... busy weekend and it's really nice outside, I'll, you know, I'll typically park one block up, you know, on, on Pacific usually is where I go. And you, maybe you have to go two sometimes, but I mean, that's as far as you need to get away usually, I mean, on the busiest weekends to get a parking spot. So putting much angle parking over there that, on a street that has parking available to you anytime you want to have it, doesn't really get us anything.
I guess this is a question. I don't, I don't mean to be rude now of our, our businesses, but basically are we talking about a lot of problems here that are caused by business relationships with their staff and where they park? Are we going through all of this talk about staffing positions for the city for enforcement because we have a parking problem for workers in town?
A, a lot of it could be that. I mean, you, if people were more proactive and, the thing is, you know, their business owners, they're concerned with running their business, you know, that's a thing, okay, they tell them, you have to go park over there, but then they have to enforce it, and that's not what they're interested in doing. It's all they can do to run their business, you know, I mean, that type of thing. That's the, I mean, I've had the same conversation I'm having with you with several business owners in town, and especially ones, more specifically down the Embarcadero really, because they'll have all their employees are all parked out in the parking lot in front, and then they'll come to us when we have events and things and say, oh, the parking lot was full. And I was like, yeah, I didn't see anybody, you know, that weekend parked in the triangle lot over there, not any of your employees or anybody else's. I mean, you guys could get together and make that happen if you wanted to. But there's, you know, they want, and then it does come back on the, it's like, we want you to solve our problem. You make that, you know, that happen. And a lot of them are like, God, it'd be great, go ahead and enforce it. You get, a lot of the business owners are like, I'm the biggest culprit. I park in front of my store all the time. I come, come flying in, you know, I got to drop stuff off and then end up standing for two hours, my car's sitting right out in front. I've had that conversation with them too. You know, if we did the, the enforcement, then that would create the turnover, and so those spaces would be more available, and then you have them free on the fringe so people can park for longer if they're going to hang out for a while. I mean, that's, that's kind of how it works. The Parking Management Plan from 2007, I don't think our parking situation is a whole lot different now than it was then. I think they probably still had those same issues then that they had, we have now. That's part one of the problems. This would solve that to some extent and would create more parking spaces. I, I think there is one benefit out of it, especially down on the Embarcadero. If we add some of those spaces on Market, we direct you to go up there, then we're not going to get any pushback or very little if we solve the delivery truck problem by taking some of those parking spaces away and creating delivery truck drop-off areas, you know. So we could solve a big problem if we're able to do that. I just think without adding some of those parking spaces back in, folks are going to push back, I think.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Richard, do you have any questions? Jesse, do you have any questions?
One question, and I just got here, so forgive, forgive if you guys have discussed this.
You live, you live in town, you know how it works.
So Morro Bay Boulevard from, well, Napa even further, maybe, what would be the pushback on a one-way street with double angled?
So, so I mean, you'd have to do a one-way couplet, and then we'd have to reconfigure how parking, you know, functions over there. We've talked about it internally, but not going up and down Morro Bay Boulevard. We've talked about it, you know, down, and if you wanted to make, like, if you wanted to make the Embarcadero through here one way, then we talked about making it a couplet, you know, from Harbor over to Pacific or one street over, over to here. So doing it that way, we've never really discussed doing it this way. I think right now, and you live in town, so you probably don't drive down Morro Bay Boulevard very much. You probably drive down Harbor or Pacific if you want to go down to the Embarcadero because there's, you know there's no stop signs there, or very few, and that's how you get down there. That's where the bike, as people on bikes ride too, you know, unless they want to go someplace over there. Typically, they're riding down those streets because they have designated Class II bike lanes on them, whereas Morro Bay Boulevard does not.
It, it just seems like if we're trying to funnel visitors into these businesses, keep them on Morro Bay Boulevard.
Yeah.
Give them a place to park.
It'll change, so, I mean, you can see, it's interesting. I, I think, I think the nice little test that we did over here on, on Market between Beach and Surf, several of you probably drove by it on the way in, when we made it perpendicular, during the day, when you see that, when you drive by the street going down Beach or whatever, look over there, it's like something's happening. And you look down the street, there's a bunch of cars parked over there, like, hey, what's, what's going on over there? Because it doesn't look like that in a place else. So just putting that angled parking in, even on one side of the street, is going to make it look more congested a little bit, make it look like there's stuff happening in those locations. It just kind of had, it makes them, it makes them look more used and that we have a lot more folks in town, maybe. In going through the Economic Development Strategic Plan, that was one of the comments that the consultants that were preparing it said, hey, that actually will serve you well. It'll look like there's more stuff going on, people will be more inclined to hang out and go to those locations. And I was like, ah, yeah, as opposed to driving by on their way down to the Embarcadero, it'll make them stop in the downtown. So that was one of the things they said that would be a benefit, not only adding those parking spaces, but probably maybe reinvigorating that area by just doing that. But again, your question was make it one way, and that's not something we've really taken a long look at.
So Scott, a couple, a couple of questions. We talked about, and you've had some experience on the center angled parking. It's, you know, it seems like that could be a solution on some of these streets because you wouldn't be involved in the curb cuts. You would also be able to access it both ways. And then you also would, would have an outside lane where the bikes could be further from the, the cars backing out. So did you look at, so my question now is, do you, did you look at implementing that on Morro Bay Boulevard and?
So, so we, here, we looked at this solution, specifically in this location. When you put it, on, in this location, when you put center lane parking, this is completely, this is completely, this is, this is completely unworkable. If you do this in this, on the street configuration in this location anyway, when we looked at it, I said, hey, let's go figure out why, why we only came up with 17 spaces is this configuration yields two spots.
Okay.
In this location. So that is a situation that you run into when you do center lane. You need to have it wide enough so you can have center lane and parallel on at least one of the sides, otherwise you get no yield. And so this, when we did it this way, it, it removed the parking that was parallel on the curb. I'm like, what's the point of that? You know, we're paying money just to relocate the parking. It doesn't make the street function any better. So, so that's the, so you do, you'd have to look specifically street section by street section and do that math on it. I didn't, we didn't evaluate the entire downtown. I just, I know we needed to get a better yield than 17 spaces, and I said, where can we do that? Morro Bay Boulevard, we have all the stop signs on there. Adding angled parking isn't going to make people drive any slower or probably experience any difference there because they already drive slow down there because of the stop signs. So it seemed to make sense on that side of things, and there's not a lot of, and it seemed, it would work on down on Market as well because there's not, the traffic doesn't drive fast between that area of Market either. Actually, it doesn't have all that much traffic, so.
So Market's one of the wider sections of streets that we have, so if it doesn't work on Market, then it's not going to.
Yeah.
It's not going to work on Main or Morro Bay Boulevard.
We looked at, yeah, we, yeah, and we looked at doing this on, on Market further down in the, in the area where we were talking about in it, doing center lane, and it removes, I think there's, I think it's wide enough to maintain with the, reconfigure the lane geometry. I think it's wide enough that we were able to get parallel on one side with it. But again, the perpendicular that we did added more spaces. And so, because you have perpendicular on the one side and then parallel on the other, and the yield was, was better.
Now, the yield between perpendicular, part of the problem on Market Street there between Beach and, and Surf is if, if the parking is perpendicular, as you pull out, you're actually pulling out across both lanes of traffic.
It would be, it would be, it would be an issue if we had a lot of traffic on the street, but we don't.
Yeah.
And traffic drives pretty slow through there. We could do angle, we, we get the same yield if we do angle. We could do angled on one side and then on the other side, and then it, it just, you have to redo the lane geometry when you're doing that. Or you could just do it all angled, you know, having it angled one way on one side and one on the other. Just depends on how you want to do it. It just, when you do that, you start, you have to restripe and relocate the lanes, and when you're only doing two streets, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. Hence the reason we came up with, with pulling it perpendicular. But you could just make that whole stretch angled in one direction. It's just if you came in on the wrong side, you'd have to turn around somewhere to get into it. So we did look at that. I mean, those were, those were, actually, the first thing that we drew up was angled there. And I said, well, what does it look like perpendicular? Because we ended up having it on both sides of the street, so once you cross streets, all of a sudden you're swerving and to get in line, and that, that didn't seem like a great idea when we laid it out on paper, on the computer anyway.
If we go to timed, or if we go to timed and paid parking, what is the, what's our critical mass and what's our return on, on, on investment on that?
Well, so I haven't done the outreach to the parking companies yet. I'm scheduled to kind of do that after the first of the year. Was really just kind of seeing what your idea, I mean, this is to get your take on it, to say, hey, yeah, the planning commission thinks it's an idea worthwhile, or why are we doing this? You know, I mean, if, if that's your response, then we, then we're going to go do the rest of it. I would, I would invite them into the city, probably have two or three different companies come in, give presentations, probably to this board, actually. I think bringing it before the commission would be interesting for you. And there's a couple of different methodologies of companies that do it. We probably wouldn't do what Susan suggested, and that's individual metered parking. We'd probably have the kiosk thing where you walk up and get a ticket for the street and just have it well signed. We, that's the way we did it when I was at Pisma, and it worked fine. We didn't have any issues with it, so we didn't need to do it individuals, spot by spot.
Yeah. Just a little bit of a comment, and I'll, I'll take. It's, it seems like we need, it would be easier to enforce if it was paid parking than if it was just timed parking. Because then the code enforcement officer would come by the first time, and if the red flag is up, then it's a ticket. He doesn't have to mark it and see if they've been there for two or three hours. So, so it seems like the, I don't think we're going to gain anything with timed parking, but more so with paid parking would, would be a lot simpler to enforce and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, parking now is getting pretty sophisticated. They have the system that they just put in at Cal Poly, right? Where you can have the app on your phone and it shows you where open spaces are. Could have that in the downtown. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost the same expense as just having the kiosk there. They, they're already built in to have that. It's, you have to pay the extra to have each one of the spaces monitored, but it's, it's, it's insignificant really in the overall cost. I've been talking to a couple, I talked to Cal Poly about it, actually, and they said, ah, the cost isn't dramatically different. And I was like, oh, well, that'd be pretty cool. People, people would like that if you had the app and you're like, oh, the parking space is over here, you know, that'd be kind of neat. So, so I definitely want, that's why I say there's different methodologies for providing the service, and those are, that's one of the companies I wanted to bring in and see how that works and give you a little presentation on it if we end up going down that road or at least kicking the tires on it a little bit more seriously if you think it's good, worthwhile to pursue further, then I'd take that to counsel and say, commission's interested in it, and this is what I would do moving forward, and get there, them to say, okay, and then we'd go down that road and continue talking about it, so.
Did you look at, another question. Did you look at the street ends above the bluff as far as extra, you know, being able to harvest extra parking spaces up there for, especially for employees and maybe stripe those and not, not have them paid for, because that would be an excellent place for employees up from the Embarcadero to park?
Yeah, I know, we didn't look at that. Did not, that wasn't something that occurred to me.
Okay. I was looking at it on Google Map, and there seems like we could harvest several more parking, you know, parking spots up in, in those areas.
Okay. I would take, I mean, that's something we could take a look at too. I, I mean, that would work good. It would be good if we gave nearby parking, I mean, if we put Market here and nothing happened other than they, folks had their employees go park up there, that would be great.
Yeah.
You know, and so that was kind of the concept behind it, you know, if you, and then we would, and then if we follow through with the wayfinding signs, that would include both wayfinding for vehicles, but also for pedestrians. And so it would point to where we have parking areas like that, you know, it could point to where free parking is and that type of thing. And so you could have a pretty good sign program that points you to where to go to for these types of things. And then you do educational outreach to all the businesses and say, hey, we put this in place, it's free here, this is where you should have your employees park, because we're going to make this timed and enforced or paid and enforced. And so we want to have a place for them to go, so.
Did you, did you look at, you know, EV charging stations such as, if we're going to be going into, into parking and timed parking and stuff, we might want to look at, like, some of the companies we could, you know, co-sponsor, ChargePoint or EV Go, some of the fast chargers. That would bring a lot more, you know, that, that would bring another type of tourist or to the area, especially in the parking lots. Has the city talked to any companies like that?
We haven't had, I mean, we've, we've wanted to get a charging station down in on the Embarcadero.
Specifically, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so, because we need one. It would be nice to have one at both ends at least. But, I mean, it hasn't gone any further than that, realizing that we, we lack them, we don't have them in those locations and we'd like to have them there. It hasn't gone beyond that on the public works side of things. I haven't heard anything.
And the DC charging is critical, not the Level Two, but the Level Three is, is what would be effective. The Level Two would be fine for employees or somebody who's going to be there for four or five hours, but, you know, for somebody coming to lunch or driving through, going to stop in for lunch, then, you know, a Level Three would be, you know, another bonus for them.
Okay.
And it'd also be a, you know, another profit center too. So, okay, so how about, let's bring it up for discussion and then we can go through the, our list of questions. So, Michael, you want to go first on this one?
Yeah, I guess my biggest concern is if we've got some of these issues now, if we actually do get more businesses in the downtown section, I think it's a long-term problem that, you know, we're just, we're just starting to get the groundwork together. I have a real concern due to some personal situations with, with people I'm, I'm close to from, from bike accidents. And I'm, I'm very concerned about the Main Street conflicts with, with the bikes. I think there, there's, there's something odd about when you enter a town that you're, that you're coming in to visit, that the very place that you come down to enter, which is probably for a lot of people, Morro Bay Boulevard, that what receives you there? Do you, do you move through it to get to a place to park or do you find a place to park? If you find a place to park, you're going to slow down the momentum of people coming in and moving through. So my, my intuitive self wants to move everybody to free spaces at the ends of the Embarcadero and use the trolley to move around. Or some combination of something like Albertson's in those two lots and move people around. Don't have them parking here at all. But that's probably a strategy that works at the peak periods. But I, I, it, it's been hard for me to rationalize the angled parking. I, I've been in situations where I, I think mistakes are made with angled parking, judgment mistakes, backing up, we're backing uphill, it looks like on, you know, Morro Bay Boulevard. But I, I also know we have a, a problem that appears to be such that this is coming back again, so.
It, it's, it popped up throughout all the outreach that we did. I mean, so it's at a minimum a perceived issue by the business folks that are in the downtown. They see this as a problem. I think it's, I think it's not just one problem, it's several. So, meaning there's the employee, where do they park and how that's, and how that works, and then not a whole lot of patience for, you know, if I can't park in front of your store, I don't go to it. I, I have not experienced that. When I want to go someplace, I'll park wherever I need to park and walk wherever, however long it takes me to get over there, but.
Yeah, my own personal urban experience is if you get within two or three blocks of where you're trying to go, you've got gold. So this, this kind of convenience thing. So, so part of me wants to respond to that by saying, okay, if you have to be there, pay for it. You know, so I'm, I'm, I'm most kind, my, my, my sense is I feel good about giving somebody who comes with a family and is going to be spending money here, they have one more expense paying to park. I want to give them the ability to park for free, but they, and will give them a trolley that they can ride, maybe for free. But if you absolutely have to park here, then I'm, I'm more open than I was on these other meetings to say, okay, I'm, I'm, I would think about that as something positive. I, I do have concerns about Main. I, I just think that's, that's kind of our main artery, and if, if that's our main bikeway going through, I, I don't bike myself. I'd, I'd really want to get some feedback from, from those folks who do use that mode about what would be happening on Main. I think we've got a lot of places that, things are going to be going slow there. I'm, I'm, I think I'm most interested in the marketplace 90-degree parking. I, I think that, and what Commissioner Luer was saying about the bluff tops, and I, I think, I'd be, I'd be open, though, that if we started to look more at angled parking outside of these zones, eventually. I, I really think that if, if we've got a claim, we, we do have this odd configuration of super wide streets here for what they need to be. And, and one strategy would make them smaller and give more sidewalk spaces over the long term to the businesses. The other one is, put more of the angled parking out there. So, I'm, I'm open to the angled parking, I'm open to paying for it. I'm most skeptical about Main. I love the idea of getting parking off the Embarcadero and getting it down to the ends of the Embarcadero and using the trolley. I reminded, there's a wonderful movie called Urbanized. They, they talked to one of the mega-city mayors, and he says, I look through the Constitution and I see right to life and liberty, but I see no right to parking. And I, I think we're doing, there's a lot of infrastructure we're talking in here about the city paying for. That seems to be a problem that's the business people, dealing with their own staff. And so, we take that on. It makes me a little upset.
So, I mean, I'd like to make a comment on that, not on that specifically, but on the Main Street concept. I would say, I would like to hear from all of you on that, because I was a little concerned about that when I first saw. In fact, I originally asked Ryan to remove it from the map. But then looked back at it, and we, I mean, we don't get a great yield there. I think it's going to be only three or four spaces, really. So, if you all have similar concerns, please voice them, because I, I think that's the street that we could lose, and maybe do something like Commissioner Lucas suggested, and maybe look at replacing those elsewhere, and similar to what Chair Luer said, and maybe looking at some of the other street ends to put some of those parking spaces there. So, it can be done in, in, in that, and I, I too was concerned about it upsetting this flow of, of folks on Main in that area, because it's pretty congested.
The, the one thing I'll add, the final comment, is I completely agree with Commissioner Luer's comments about electric charging stations. That's, if we don't get in that wave, we're, we're a desert now. And you can map these, and people will make their choices of where they go based on those accommodations. And we don't have to consider a whole fleet worth, but if we don't address that, we're going to lose some of the people who have capacity to help some of these businesses work. There's a special kind of traveler that I, I think we need to, to think about accommodating.
I, I, I got on my bike, and I rode around a little bit. And I, I kind of started thinking, it's like, why are we doing this? Why, why, why are we addressing this parking thing? And, and what, what comes to me is, it's to slow people down, have them park, and promote pedestrian walking in, in our, in our downtown. And so, one of the, I want to address the main ar, one of the main arteries, the Moro Bay Boulevard one. I like the angled parking idea on Moro Bay Boulevard, and, and what Commissioner Jesse Barone?
Yes.
Barone, Barone was mentioning us even a one-way with double. I, I think that it's something might be worth entertaining. Now, wherever you have angled parking, forget about putting a bike lane in there or shared anything like that, because that just, it's, it makes you, it's, it, it makes a situation that is, could be dangerous, you know, for bicyclists.
So, you're sharing the lane on Moro Bay Boulevard now, if you're riding a bike down there with cars?
Yeah.
All the shareos does is hopefully make you aware that you're sharing, that there's no bike lane there, and that you're sharing the road with them. That's, there, there's arguments to be made that they don't actually do that, so, fair point.
Yeah, you know, what I would say is, what you would want to try to direct is, let the cars go down Moro Bay Boulevard, you got Harbor or Pacific, and direct the bicyclists off to the side.
With the wayfinding signage.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree with that.
Yeah. And have that, that, and, and, you know, and then people that want to bolt down, down to the very end, they can, they can zip, zip on either, either side. But that Main Street, you know, there's like, we, we have, you know, we have some very unique businesses here, you know? We have a, you know, music store, we have the Shine Cafe. People come in from out of town just to go to these places. And so, I think that if we could help promote these unique businesses and have the other people get ideas to, to have that, I think that, that could, it makes sense to me from a, from that perspective. Now, so, Moro Bay Boulevard, I, I like it, but move the, move the bicyclists off it, and I don't like that shared arrow thing, because it gives you a false sense of security. And then, Main Street, I'm, I, I agree with Commissioner Lucas on that, with the, with, if we're, if we're going to be bringing in traffic there, have an angled parking there, I'm not, I'm not all that. I, I, I'm not supportive of that. The electric vehicles, for sure. And that's another one of those things that you could lace into an app and, and, and the parking thing. So, all, all, all that can be used with the latest technologies. And then, on the Embarcadero, I, I kind of like what, what you were, what you were proposing, you know? You know, dealing with the, it looks like we're addressing those issues, dealing with the traffic, the deliveries, and, and moving it out to the outskirts and having that trolley. And, and I think that trolley's a, a, it, it's, it should be free, I think, and it should be, it, it's a feature that the city, that the city has. Let's see if that was it. I think, oh, and as far as, you know, Scott, you know, the, the, one of the things is, I remember from the Planning Commission Academy that you sent us, and that, that was a very enlightening. And one of the things that I remember taking home from that is how much the value of parking, okay? The value. So, I don't know the answer. It seems to me that there's technologies out there that we can, you know, that, that are efficient, that we could use. I agree with what you were kind of commenting about, not timed parking, but like metered parking, but I'm open to that, okay? To say that.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. Joe?
Gosh. There's, talk about complexity and, you know, and a series of thoughts that are relevant, but not always related. Where to begin? You know, I, I think that the time is well past us beginning to promote this sort of redress of pedestrians as opposed to automobiles. You just have to begin somewhere. So, I, so I look at the, the idea of trying to increase parking spaces availability, one plan or another, as a way of anticipating future growth and the future growth of the number of automobiles in the environment, which is really what we don't want to do. Now, why do I say that? For the citizens of Moro Bay, I was thinking about this, you know, their frequent trips are to the grocery store, to the post office, to the hardware store, to the bank. At least that's what I do. And, you know, in every case, either there's a very ample existing parking lot, or there's very ample curbside parking, okay? So that we're probably talking about, you know, parking for the periodic visitors to, to Moro Bay, or, or the employees. And, you know, and I keep thinking about what's attractive for Moro Bay, and it's almost like a chicken and the egg proposition, you know? We'd love to have more enticing businesses that would bring people in, and then people would come in, and there'd be more enticing businesses. Well, it strikes me that the least expensive way is to make it attractive for pedestrians, okay? Because you, because we can't really control how we get business people to come here. And you got to realize, you know, my, my head is still full from my recent trip to the mountain villages of Italy, you know? But I, but I saw people of every age walking the corsos, as I always do, and it's, it's a form of entertainment for them, you know? And again, from that planning seminar, was demonstrated that if you get people to come, businesses will come because they want to be where people are, because they know people will spend money there. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm really not in favor of trying to reorganize the city, the streetscape, so that we can eke out a few more spaces here and there. You know, I, I think we should, if we have to, and again, and I'll go back to that in a second about a demonstrated need, but, you know, we have these parking lots, and I'll bet if we turn them into, we have these lots, and if we turn them into parking lots, it's not terribly attractive. But it's an improvement over crowding our major arteries with cars, because I just think cars are a blight on the environment. So, I would be in favor of, of that. And, and frankly, you know, when tourists come to the city, they are prepared to walk. I mean, they're not going to walk three miles, but, but a block or two, despite, you know, maybe anecdotal evidence that, you know, someone left a business site because they couldn't find a parking space within close proximity. I, I think that's a rare case. I think people come to Moro Bay, even from the outskirts of Moro Bay, and they're, they're prepared to walk a little bit, and, and, and probably increasingly so if we, if we sort of establish that as, as a norm. You know, with respect to paid parking, you know, there's a perception, I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I think I, I sort of, a lot of people share this perception that there really isn't a parking problem in Moro Bay. So, if you have paid parking, people are going to ask, well, you know, why are we doing this? It's really, it's really not necessary. What you want to do is, you want to impose some rationality on a resource, okay? And, and so, if you're, if you're saying that parking space is scarcer than it should be, then paying for it in some fashion, or, or allocating a specific time for it is a way of, way of imposing some rationality. I get that. But I, but I think paid parking is just a bridge too far at this point, because you just, I, I would defy anyone to really demonstrate to me that paid parking is necessary, you know? Again, we may have to impose some rationality, but what I'm hearing is that we have a problem with employees, and we haven't imposed some kind of rationality on the cost that they're imposing on the, on the, on the economic community. And so, so there's where we need to address a solution, and, and, and not simply, you know, creating more spaces in close proximity to the businesses. We ought to figure out some kind of imaginative solution, I think, to sort of persuade the citizen, the, the employees to park further away. With respect to angled parking, you know, that's a tough one. Backing out just doesn't strike me as terribly safe on many occasions. Again, I think I've mentioned this before, when you're, you're parked next to a van or a pickup truck and you can't see, and then to combine that with bicycles coming down is just a bad formula. And I remember, again, at one of these parking seminars where the bicyclist, he's sort of the maven of bicycling in San Luis Obispo County, said absolutely that there, if you really want to encourage people to bicycle, and I think we do in this community, that would be attractive as well, you must impose some kind of a barrier between the bicyclists and the traffic, other than paint. Paint isn't going to provide confidence to parents for their kids, or for women on bicycles, and for, for a lot of men as well, that it's, because you're really saying, you know, I, I trust the, the care and vigilance of this car that's coming down the road to actually keep me from serious injury or death. That's a, that's a proposition, you know, I wouldn't embrace. What else? Oh, yeah, and again, in terms of, you know, banning automobiles from, from sections of the city, I would love if we could really have some kind of an experiment, you know, on the Embarcadero, where if not completely barring the traffic, at least confine it to one way, and, and then try and do some relatively inexpensive things to make the Embarcadero a pedestrian destination. Now, we're working on it in terms of increasing the Harbor Walk, and that's all great. But, you know, a food truck or two that wasn't serious competition to the existing restaurants by maybe virtue of what their menus are, the suggestion of artwork and musicians, you know, and, you know, if we could, and I, and I, if, if we get people, I think it would be, if we start to see an increase in people, it would be an easier proposition to get allocations for benches and some trees and things like that. And pretty soon, you have people going there, like they do in so many other parts of the world, because they just want to get out of their apartments, or, you know, backyards where their neighbors are looking in on them, and just go breathe the fresh air.
Jesse?
So, before I forget to mention it, I am not in favor of the angled parking on Main. So, for sure, I agree with, I think, everybody else on the commission. I think that's a bad idea. I also agree with Richard. If we are going to do angled parking on Moro Bay Boulevard, I do think we need to sign the bike riders to Pacific or Harbor. That seems like a no-brainer. I agree that, that seems like a bad idea, having people backing out with bike traffic. You know, if someone chooses to ignore the sign and go that way of their own volition, you know, kind of hard to avoid everybody getting down there, but I think the shareos on Moro Bay Boulevard would be something I would want to not encourage. As far as market, I think market seems like a really good spot for our EV idea. I think that's a great idea, too. Not necessarily a moneymaker, but maybe it could actually offset the cost of the, the parking officer, which I, seems like should be, that PD should be able to absorb that management.
I'll tell the chief you said that. So, yeah, I mean, they're not, so our police department's not, they don't now, and probably aren't anytime soon, going to do parking enforcement. The number of calls that they get with the number of officers that we have on, that's pretty much, they're running all day long.
For sure, for sure. I mean, adding another officer would be, but a parking officer, it seems like the chief, maybe should be able to manage another parking officer.
Parking officer would be, you know, would be done probably through me and community development. I don't even know if there's anybody over there that, other than, I don't know how they would, I don't know who would operate out of police. It probably is going to be in community development, it's probably going to, it would be similar to how we have code enforcement, it would probably be underneath that same guy, I would probably have them underneath that, that tree there. But, yeah, I mean, that's probably where I would live.
Right. So, what I was getting at there was, so the EV, that sounds like a great idea, and I love the idea with the app. I think that's, that's a winner. I think we could put the trolley schedule on the app. If we got folks parking at The Rock and taking the trolley back, I mean, not parking over there as soon as they get their dredging stuff out of there. I'm in favor of paid parking along Moro Bay Boulevard. I'm also in favor of paid parking on the Embarcadero. That would change my behavior. I live, I live at Monterey and Pacific. If I have to pay to drive two blocks, I'm going to walk. You know, even if it's down the Embarcadero and up that hill, I'm going to do that. If I have the availability to park down there for free, I might try it, just because I don't want to walk back up the hill. But, I mean, so I, I think Friday, Saturday, Sunday holidays. I mean, I don't, I don't think, see why we'd have to do that seven days a week. I know Pismo has that seven days a week policy, but I, I just don't see that that's a necessary, necessary evil here. I, I live right, right there, and Monterey and Pacific is a ghost town 90% of the time, so. So, anyway, I, I think I'm digressing here. What else did I want to talk about? Oh, the Main Street Farmer's Market. Blocking that street off every Saturday, I love it. I, I think, I think that's awesome. I think we should do it Saturday and Sunday. I don't know if we could get everybody to agree, but I like the fact that it slows everybody down, it channels people where we want to channel them. I would be in favor of an Embarcadero-type situation between Harbor and Pacific, shut down Fridays and Saturdays, noon to 5, noon to 7. I don't know how we would ingress and egress those, those parking lots, but, you know, something to think about. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Front Street.
Front Street.
Okay. We've all, really good comments from everybody. I think this restriping gives us a chance to address some of the evils that has befallen this town for this town for various and sundry reasons. And one of the main evils, I think, is the Morro Bay Boulevard. How, for one thing, the logic of why the stop signs went in was just ludicrous and why they stayed, I've never understood that. The reason the stop signs went in was to slow traffic so people would go slower so they would stop at the businesses. Totally illogical. They also, at the same point, they, they did angled parking on Monterey, but what they did is they ran angled parking and they ran, they made it one, one way, but they ran the two blocks running one way in opposite directions. So it was just, it didn't make any sense at the time, it didn't make any sense when it was in place, and they finally at least took out the one ways there. I would like to see the, get rid of the, the stop signs on Morro Bay Boulevard. I would like to look into making it, you know, a one-lane street, and if we could do angled parking on both sides and make it one way coming down. Because you have the couplets of Pacific and Harbor and you have all the side streets going in there both, both ways, all the way up and down, you basically have a ladder pattern, a circulation, you wouldn't have to walk more than half a block at any point to get to any point on Morro Bay Boulevard. So by keeping the side streets two ways, having your main, your main free laterals, you know, on Pacific and on Harbor, that gives you plenty of access to the central Embarcadero, I mean, the central downtown area. Make that a nice, a much more friendly pedestrian area with striping, you know, striped bulb bouts to start with and then paving changes later. If, if we could do double angled parking there, I think, you know, they did this in Salinas and it made it extremely nice downtown on the Main Street of Salinas. And you go, you go there and you're going to go slow. You're going to drive slow. I'm not sure you need the charros there, I'm not against them, but if somebody's going to ride their bike down there, the cars are going to be doing 10, 15 miles an hour anyway because you're going to restrict the free flow of traffic just by the bulb bouts and the angled parking. Nobody's going to want to really go, go fast down Morro Bay Boulevard. They don't do it now. But, and personally, maybe it's just me, but I can't remember the last time I ever drove up Morro Bay Boulevard. It just doesn't seem to make sense to me. I always, if I'm going to drive down and drive it, I said right then, you know, you drive down Morro Bay Boulevard. So it seems to me the logical solution is to make it one way going west, you know, towards, towards the bay. And then that gives our, our visitors a perfect funnel pathway down through our downtown area, which would then be enhanced with slower traffic, bulb bouts, the bulb bouts could have benches in them, we've got nice trees on that street. I think that would enhance the pedestrian feel of the, of the town, would have, enhance the businesses on that, that street tremendously. I'm, okay, paid parking versus timed parking. We have a history of not paying for parking here, and I think that's a real, real problem. I think it's a fallacy. There was a study, a case study, and it was a book that was the high price of free parking. And it was a case study between Pasadena and an adjacent town. They, Pasadena put in paid parking and they were both having problems, you know, redeveloping the areas. Well, eventually Pasadena was able to pay for a lot of the streetscape redevelopment with the paid parking and became a much more inviting place and rents went up and more traffic, everything snowballed, they had a much better, much better outcome and the adjacent, the adjacent area still is struggling with their free parking. So I think we have to twist our brain around a little bit that paid parking is actually an advantage. Because for one thing, like I, like I said, it's, it would be extreme, it'd be a much easier to enforce the paid parking because the red flag goes up or whatever, whatever system, you know, you know, red paint comes out or something on the car and it, you know, however it's enforced, but it's much easier if it's paid, you can easily, easily see that it's, they're overdue. You know, you give them a ticket, they don't do it again, you know? You give them a warning. But I think we can pay for, you know, that's what I was looking at, return on investment. I think we, and then critical mass of what we need, I think the paid parking can pay for both the enforcement, the added enforcement, and also can pay for, for a parking improvement, you know, a business improvement district that can then pay for the street improvements that the city never has the money for. So I would like to see any profit from the parking district help fund streets, streetscape improvements, you know, after paying for all of the, the costs on that. And I think we would have a, a funding source that could actually, we could use for improving the downtown district, which we don't have right now. And it's always left as the poorest stepchild, and so we'd never get any improvements. So that's, that's kind of what I was thinking on that. Directions for the bike paths, you know, to, to route the bikes to Pacific and Harbor, that's a no-brainer. The other thing I kind of like to see in this plan, too, that we haven't talked about is, is a potential for something in the way of a city bike where we could have, we could direct people, you know, day visitors to the lot at The Rock, you know, maybe the Coleman Park lot, maybe the, you know, the lot, maybe more, you know, shared lot up at Albertson's or something in that parking lot, we can, and then have a city bike location that they could rent a bike for the day, you know? And I would love to see that implemented, you know, one at the State Park, definitely, you know, one at, one at The Rock and maybe one in the, you know, on the east side of town somewhere. Maybe that, maybe that parking lot next to Lemos, where we could have, have it there and have it as a, you know, as a, as a drop-off, you know, for cars to park there, pick up a bike and ride, you know, ride through town. So I think we, if, if we look at this more holistically than just, you know, where are we going to put angled parking, where are we going to put straight parking, then I think we can come up with some really good solutions and also have a funding source to, to fund them. I've biked for a lot of years and a lot of miles and I'm, quite frankly, if somebody's backing up out of an angled park, parking spot, I can see their backup lights. So I'm not as concerned about them as I am about somebody, you know, riding by, parallel cars parked and have them throwing their door open. It's, it's easier for me to see somebody's backup lights and then I can avoid them and I know it, you know, even having their foot on the brake, brake pedal. If they let go of that, then I'm, you know, I'm alerted to that. But you have no pre-warning of somebody throwing open their car door. So the parallel parking, you know, street-side parallel parking, I think is more dangerous than angled in parking, from personal experience. And like I said, charros, you know, either way, I don't really care, you know? Main Street, I don't think we need the angled parking on Main Street, just to bring that up, because if we're only going to, if we're only going to gain two or three parking spots, I think changing the flow of the traffic and shifting the traffic lane over, I don't think is worth it. And, you know, would love to see streets closed down and have pedestrian thorough, you know, pedestrian holidays on, on whatever streets we could at whatever time we could, would be great, but that needs to be a whole program that gets thought out. I quite frankly don't like the, the Farmer's Market on Main Street. I would rather see it on Market Street. I think you have, you have a wider street there, you don't impede the traffic flow, and I think you could, you could then expand it much easier than you can on Main Street. And I think you'd have a better, a better Farmer's Market there.
Yeah, they, they put it there as kind of an economic incentive for people to go and see that there's other businesses right in the middle of downtown, that's why it's there.
Yeah, and it doesn't work that way. It just doesn't.
A lot, a lot of the business owners over there don't like, some of them don't actually like it, having it there. They, they close up when it starts and things like that, so I, there's a little bit of friction with that. I've talked to Erica Crawford at the Chamber a few times about it, and she's like, yeah, there's, there's a love-hate relationship over there.
My wife used to manage a clothing store in San Luis on, on Higera, the ambiance clothing store, and she would close down on Thursday nights. You know, Farmer's Market, you'd think that would be where you'd have your most traffic and, and nobody came in and all you got, all she got was barbecue, you know, barbecue, you know, filling up the store, so. So I, you know, I think Market Street's a better place for the Farmer's Market. Okay, what, what have we missed, Scott? Okay, Joe?
You, you triggered a thought of mine, and I think I'm actually going to reverse what I said earlier, because I completely buy the notion that if the, this is with respect to paid parking, I completely buy the notion that if the receipts from paid parking stay in the district and are used to the benefit, then everybody's boat rises. My original thought was, but the perception is that we in Morro Bay don't need paid parking because there isn't that critical of a parking problem. Well, if I'm really serious about changing the perception of and redressing the imbalance that exists now between cars and pedestrians, well, we got to change the perception of people who think there needs to be free parking. No. So I, I would support that, yeah.
Okay. And then also, free parking has a perception of what you're paying for it. So it, it appears that it's not critical that, that, you know, their time isn't worth anything here. And I, you know, as far as where the paid parking should go, you know, I think it needs to start, you know, at Morro Bay Boulevard. The Embarcadero definitely, you know, and then probably, you know, on the Embarcadero, you know, the lots, certain of the lots should probably be paid parking. You know, the triangle lot should be free. You know, Front Street, that's, that's questionable, we've got a lot of parking there on Front Street. I, you know, that's close enough that I think it could be a lower-priced parking, but it probably should still be paid. But that's, I'm, I'd like to see what the ROI is and on how much investment we need and where our critical mass is. That may be something that we would add for a critical mass.
The great things about the parking companies that do these things, you know, that we come and get presentations on, they'll do the analysis for us.
Yeah.
They'll give you the cost, what they think that the payback will be. I mean, this is, I, I did this when I was in Pismo, had them come in and got the, got the return on investment, and in fact, when we implemented it, I think the return on the initial investment for the parking kiosks, for the areas where we implemented the paid parking, was supposed to be six months, and I think it paid back in three and a half.
Yeah, that's what I've heard on.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I mean, it was just ridiculous how fast that we got the money back on that. I mean, it was, I mean, we did implement it leading right up into summer, so the timing worked out well then, but it, but they'll be, the only point there is really, they'll be able to tell us, they'll like, hey, it looks like from, you know, our analysis on how spaces are full, and, because they'll go out and analyze how many spaces are full, who's using them, what's going on, and they'll probably take a look at it over a couple of a period, and then they'll use that to give us our numbers and so.
Okay.
Okay, Richard, what, what? One thing that I kind of triggered as well is part of the, if you get, if, if you can get the parking funds to help with some of the landscaping, maybe you can do a collaboration with some of the business owners as well, doing some nice concrete furniture right now.
Yeah.
Some nice, some kind of furniture or whatever in front of their businesses. Not saying so much of a parklet, but a, you know, like, you know, you have these tables, tables out there.
Even bulb bouts.
Yeah.
With a bench.
Yeah, yeah. And, but, you know, for people to sit down and, and stuff. And I think that might lend itself nicely with the angled parking as far as Morro Bay Boulevard.
Yeah.
Let me make one more comment about the one-way on Morro Bay Boulevard. And I think one of the problems, I've, I've been here 18 years in the city now, and I still don't know the street names, all of them, I'm sad to say. But I think they, they suffer from a lack of image. You know, they're all interchangeable to some extent, you maybe remember a business on a corner or something, but I think that idea of making it one-way, descending down, you know, we spend so much time talking about that intersection down with the Embarcadero, up through Market Street and things like that. The idea that it's one-way in, down, double parked, that's the dense enforcement area along with the Embarcadero. I think it tidies things up in a really nice way and it, and it asks the visitor to move to the side streets as well. When they move, they become more familiar with some of the other parts of the city. And I think, I think it's an imageable thing at that point, and I think it might be a meaningful thing to really take a close look at it.
Yeah, go, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay, Joe?
Okay, one more thing. And, you know, based on that seminar from months ago down in LA, I'm assuming that with respect to paid parking, you, we wouldn't have to, we would, the amounts could be variable based on demand and time of the day as well. Could we do something like that?
Yeah, you can, you can change all of the variables, depending on how proactive you want to be and what kind of systems you put in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so like, because if you do the system that monitors itself, you know, like how many cars are in the areas, then if there's not a whole lot of cars there, you can, it can change the prices. I mean, I, I've gone to probably two or three in the last maybe three years, parking seminar type things, and the options that you have out there are pretty incredible. It's just, you know, I mean, some of the systems are more expensive, obviously, but they can, you can monitor as much as you need to monitor, you know, depending on the type of system that you get. So it'd be interesting, again, to bring some of those folks in and have them, you know, say, hey, what is the possibility? So I mean, I think at least at a minimum, what I'm getting out of the commission is, yeah, absolutely, let's kick the tires on this a little bit more. That's what I'm going to take to council, is the, the planning commission's interested in at least pursuing some of these other things and looking at them and what that would mean and how we would, you know, how we would do them. I think that's really all we're trying to get at, is have the city council say, okay, we're interested in that, too, go, go make that happen. And so we can get some more information and then maybe on down the road, we'll have a program that we're implementing, so.
I think it's really critical, I think, to, for the equity issue, to have free spaces. Like, I know, in, in traveling in some really historic parts of England, one of the first things you'll see is, is a sign that'll say, 500 free spaces. And then you, you know there's other paid parking, but you know, the, to be able to direct people to these places and say, we have hundreds of free parking spaces, but you know what, these other places, you're going to want to be, we're going to ask you to pay for it.
Yeah.
And that provides equity and it, and it, it gets people familiar with more parts of the town and walking, I think. So I think it's, it's a good, it's a good to keep both of those things.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we can look at restriping, you know, angled parking, you know, on some of the side streets and, you know, and those might be the place for the free, the free parking. But if you want to park right in front of the, the businesses, then you should be able to put a quarter and a meter.
Yeah, I do think as we, as the downtown infills and the next generation of development, we're going to end up having to do things like more of the dense parking on the side streets than we have now.
I think, I think so. I mean, I would agree with that. I think it's unlikely that we're going to be able to acquire a property where you can have a, I mean, we might be able to come up with a public-private partnership for one of the lots, say, but I don't know how likely that is, you know, we might, we might be able to make that happen, but if we can't, the only way really to do it is this or to, or to buy a lot somewhere and then build a structure. And, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we could sustain that or not. that or not. I don't know whether it'll pay for itself. Structures are expensive.
Yeah.
So, sort of having it, you know, that sort of public-private partnership thing where, you know, we, like the Market Plaza project that we're gonna be going out with, I mean, that's gonna have, probably have a parking component to it that's, you know.
Well, San, San Luis developed a lot of their parking structures off of their, off of the parking fees, and the Business Improvement District was basically paid for by the parking fees. So, you know, it can, it can be a source of funding, and I think this, you know, if we have paid parking, I think this need, you know, that money, you know, I'm getting over my pay grade, but I think that money needs to be dedicated to the business, you know, to develop the business districts, you know, both the Embarcadero and, more importantly, probably the downtown.
Yeah, we're collecting it to keep the money there.
Yeah.
That make, that, that makes sense to me. I mean, I think that would, I mean, we, we just did the downtown and waterfront strategic plan, and then it talks about all these improvements that we can make in these areas and street furniture type things that all of you were mentioning. Unless the business owners are gonna foot the bill for it, the city's not. I mean, it's, it's gonna either come in as a form of when things redevelop, or you do this, and this is one way to get that street furniture, get the streets get the way that you wanted, and then to put regulations in that support that, so that makes sense. So.
Okay, Jesse?
If I may ask one more question, again, I'm new to this, so I'm just not quite sure how it all works. So some of those parking lots down on the Embarcadero, those are all city-owned, right? All the, all the leased spots next to libertine and Hofbrau, and those are all city, so is that part of the proposal to be paid parking as well?
So the, so the street ends, you know, I mean, we have some plans to convert some of those to things other than parking. The dead-end street ends on the waterfront side, because you probably don't really wanna, you know, have a whole lot of, I don't know why we have bayfront, bayview parking spaces. Better used for gathering and plaza spaces and things like that as opposed to parking. But the others, the other lots that we have down there, the ones on the north side of the Embarcadero, you know, to the, on the north side of the Embarcadero on the water side, that's all public, part of the, you know, the, it's adjacent to the lease sites, and then the one in the middle that sits below Centennial Stair, that's part of the cities, and then you have the Front Street Lot that Commissioner Luer was speaking about, that's the cities. And then you have Tyblin's Park, the parking lot that's down there, that actually has paid parking in it if you have a boat trailer, if you're bringing a boat into town, you have to pay, but you can park in the regular parking lot, if you just have a car, you're fine, so.
And a lot next to Suns and Buns between Embarcadero and?
The vacant one?
Yeah.
That's owned by the hotel that sits above on the bluff, and they, they're never gonna sell that thing because they don't want anything developed there. Although we've been taught, we talked to them a little while ago to see what their interest might be in, in like having us sort of beautify that lot, because it's right in the middle of the, you know, the Embarcadero down there if we, and, but we couldn't get the, the siblings all together in a meeting to get sort of concurrence there, but I was interested in actually maybe making a park-type situation there, so it is not just weeds and dirt. We're still gonna make that effort. I mean, it was gonna be, fortunately, Akani, our deputy city manager's leaving, but that's still one of the efforts on our to-do list, is to, to reengage those folks, because they own three of those vacant lots that are right in that area there, and it would be good if we could make some inroads with them to, to, again, lease the spaces from them, or at least beautify them while they're not using them, and then, you know, come up with some agreement that way, and if we could put parking on one of them for a little while, that'd be great too, and give them some money, they get some money generation out of it, so. It could be a win-win, it just depends on, you know, getting the family to talk to us. Anyway, so.
Yeah, any, any place that we could find public-private, you know, leased space for more parking, I think it'd be great, but. Okay, so we had another section, Scott?
Yeah, we do. So the other section's gonna be pretty, probably much quicker. So this is dealing with the parking and loo policy. Back in June of 2016, council adopted a resolution that suspended the $15,000 space parking and loo fee. The entire time that I was here, I've been here, no one's bought a space. I've only been here for three years, a little over, and leading up to it, I think the previous three years, we hadn't had anybody buy a space, so it, and in fact, when we were talking with the folks at the counter, it was serving as a disincentive for redevelopment. Had the same, and I've mentioned this to you before, same situation when I was in Pismo, our spaces for a very long time were $36,000 a space, based at the time on what it cost about the parking structure. Now it's more in the $40,000-plus range, but, and so it did the same thing, it served to disincentivize redevelopment. So anyway, we had the, we had the ordinance in place, it gives you the, and it reduced the fee to either free for your first four for a two-year period, and then once you got above four, you had to pay 500 bucks apiece, and then it gave authority for staff to issue seven in-loo spaces, planning commission 18 to, eight to 16 spaces, and then council anything over 16. While we have some projects in the queue that are gonna take advantage of this finally, we don't, we haven't issued any in-loo spaces yet. So the question then becomes, what do we do with this? Do we, do we, we keep the in-loo fee program? Do we raise it back up to $15,000 a space, and that's what we have? Do you want to increase or decrease that amount? And then, as part of the zoning code update, as part of the general plan LCP update, we're changing one of the policies in the zoning code to make, to match that that's on North Main, and that means that if you have an existing commercial space, you can just reoccupy that with whatever use will go in there, because right now you can't do that, and that's a disincentive for business changing out in, in the spaces that we have in the downtown. And so I don't think you ever want to disincentivize businesses from coming into town, and that does that to our existing commercial spaces. We don't want a bunch of vacant commercial spaces. So the change is gonna pick up that, so you'll be able to go from your real estate office to a restaurant, say, and you would have no penalty, and you wouldn't have to provide parking, and you don't have to pay us parking and loo fees. That's actually a pretty sound and solid decision if you wanna not have a bunch of vacant spaces in your commercial areas. So we are changing that, but where do we want to go when, when this, in June of next year, when the, when the program expires? I mean, we could move forward and extend it more, we could go back and have a, a more moderate parking and loo fee for, for folks to pay. If we're gonna add some parking spaces around, the money we collect could actually offset the cost to, to restripe those, so, you know, up into the point where we, if we implement paid parking, which would augment that as well, but having some money paid, $5,000 a space could help pay for some of that. And if we decided to roll it out, like we put it in in a couple of streets to begin with, and we say, oh, this is great, and it starts filling up and we're getting busier, then we could roll it out, as several of the commissioners indicated, to side streets and further out, and this would be one mechanism that we could use the money for to create that. It could be used as the initial money that you have, if we were able to work out a public-private partnership to put the parking kiosk there that creates paid parking, if that's what we do. Anyway, it could serve to do those things, and I was just kind of curious to get your, your take and your feel for what you thought about the program and where you'd like to go moving forward.
Okay, who wants to, who wants to take the first shot at this? Okay?
I'll jump on that. So anything we can do to lower the fees for business, obviously, that's, that's, it's gotta be priority one, so, I mean, if, if we're making money on, on a paid parking program, that, that would be no-brainer to offset those in-loo costs, decrease the cost for businesses. If we're not, if we don't have businesses, people aren't gonna park there, so, I mean, we need to free those businesses up to have those low startup costs so that we can get people to park there and go to those businesses. So, I mean, it kind of, it kind of seems very, very straightforward to me.
Joe?
Well, yeah, to, to have the parking, the associated parking fees discourage, you know, development is, you know, clearly backwards. It's probably a little more difficult to decide on exactly what the amount should be, because as we've discussed, we need monies to sort of, sort of move the parking situation out into the satellite areas. You know, I, I wish there was a way that we could sort of, what, sort of, you know, fix on the number of, well, yeah, I guess we're essentially talking about restaurants and hotel motels, I guess, right?
So I can touch on that a little bit more. So what, so what we're really talking about is the use of, so we're gonna eliminate the issue that we have when you, when you increase the intensity of a use, when you go from that real estate office to the restaurant. That was killing people, and we weren't able to, we weren't able to put them, we had to make them do weird things, like you have a really large kitchen area, and you only have this much dining because restaurant parking's based on dining area. It just, it didn't make sense, like, we're trying to give them, we're gonna open their business, and it's barely gonna hang on because they don't have seating, I mean, it just is an odd process that we're going through. So what it would really be used for is when a development application comes in to redevelop something or add, add something on to something, and then it'll be a parking requirement that goes with that. We're gonna go to, we're gonna go probably to parking maximums, I'm guessing, in our zoning code, moving forward, as opposed to minimum parking standards. We're gonna go to maximum parking standards, and this would play in with that, so I didn't add that, I should have put a fourth item on there that indicated that, because that's in our draft zoning code regulations that we have right now at staff level, it has that in there, or will. But it would come into place again when development's being proposed, and you come up with whatever that parking number is, and maybe they can provide five spaces, but they can't provide 10, so they could pay for five, and then we would use that to, to enhance or improve parking elsewhere in the general area where we collected the fee, that'd be the idea.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect some payment, we just, you know, we sort of have to, you know, mitigate the burdensomeness of that. And so maybe, you know, maybe we would leave the current program in place for a little bit longer and sort of see how things develop, and see what expenses we need to cover this remodeling of our entire parking structure, or, you know, maybe raise it a little bit, maybe in increments per year to sort of see how things are going. Yeah, but I think there, there should be some, some costs associated with it, because I think that's, it's a business expense, you know, and again, but I don't, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to burden businesses, nor do I want to make it seem absolutely free, or that the, the burden of providing parking has become a municipal problem and not the enterprise's problem.
Richard?
Yeah, I, that's a tough one, you know, in the, I talked to a friend of mine who had a business, and for a long, long time ago, and he opened a business, he had to pay the in-loo fees, and, and he has a successful business, yeah? But I, I'm kind of like what Commissioner Graffy was saying, is I don't, I don't have a, I can't quantify it, you know, but I think that there, there needs to be, there needs to be, you should come up with a good number. There needs to be, there needs to be a balance there, you know, because I don't, I, I don't think that it, you know, discourages, Morro Bay's, you know, is special, and so when people come in, there needs to be a balance to, as part of that, as part of, to be, if you're... Let's just say, I think there needs to be some, in loo fee, I don't know what that amount is, I, you know, from, like, from, from my pocketbook, 15,000 is ridiculous, you know, I can't do it, you know, but, but there is, there is, you know, there is that, maybe a percentage or something, that's some, some kind of a, some quantified formula, maybe, you know, that needs to be looked at, because I, I think that the city is, you know, you know, just to sustain, you know, to sustain the infrastructure, okay?
Yeah, I mean, so how this can work, I mean, so a lot of people, I've been dealing with this for, for a long time, for, you know, 20 years now, and I, I don't seem, so the, the city of Pismo Beach, when I was there, they changed their fees for several years, I mean, they were like 4,000 for a while, and they were 5,000, they were 12,000, and then they're like, nope, they gotta pay the full cost, and then went up to 36,000, and we had nothing happening. Nobody was buying them. I think we had one project right before the recession hit that bought three or four of them, and he was hurting going into the recession as a result of it, because there were 36,000 a pop. But most folks said, you know, hey, yeah, we wouldn't mind paying something, but, you know, it starts becoming a disincentive for us coming in when you start getting into the, the 10 and 15,000, you know, like, hey, we could pay, we'd be happy to pay five or six, or, or even 8,000. Those, we seem to be, when we had those fees in place that were at those numbers, we were getting folks coming in and paying for them with that. They said that seemed to work for them, but when they got into that, when it started getting into that 12,000 range, they were like, it started petering off quite a bit, and then we get 36, and literally I just had the one project that was right down on the waterfront that paid for it, because they were gonna have vacation rentals and the thing that we're gonna, gonna pay them back, so, anyway.
Michael?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think there's a relationship between kind of the, the duration of the business entity's transaction, the scale of the transaction, and I, I think we have to, to look at the, the nature of the use itself. I, I just keep thinking, if I was gonna try to develop some kind of, of, you know, worker housing downtown, maybe the folks have a car, maybe they don't, maybe they have to use transit, it's getting started. 15,000 to impose on a, on a unit, studio unit or a one-bedroom unit is, is gonna knock that cost out of the realm of possibility for the very people we're trying to say, we want to try to help attract here. So I'd say that's a different one than the market rate, you know, rental situation, vacation rental situation, where, where that person is gonna have a car, they're gonna expect to be close to where the thing operates. And I think it's different if we have the, things like the hotels, that, you know, those, those folks probably want to have the, the car with the, with the unit, but.
They probably need to have parking.
And where it changes to me is if I, if I envision the downtown acquiring more evening things, I think that would be the, the greatest hope I would have, is that you walk downtown and you see more open than a few liquor stores, you know, and, and, you know, the theater and a few more restaurants, and getting that gravitas downtown. I'm trying to think, where are those people parking that are in there? Have they come already, and we're, we're getting them to stay longer, so they're kind of using that parking that we've been talking about today, this evening? You know, do, if we add some intensity of use, though, if I get five, six new restaurants that are successful, or a few nightclubs, things like that, that, is it, is it a trade-off then? Is my day traffic then trading off to the night traffic? So I think it's, it's really a, it's really a, a kind of it depends thing based on, can we envision how the whole thing works holistically based on use? Because I think that's what's gonna drive it. It's not the square footage, it's the, it's the use that's gonna drive it to a point. You know, if we, if we were successful with something like the, there was discussion about conference center, things like that, you know, that, that's a lot of folks to absorb all of a sudden in, in, in a, in an area for a, for a certain duration. So I, I tend to think we'd have to be very cautious about marrying the costs, a variable cost with use intensity, trade-off with some kind of duration thing over the course of the day. But I think the, I think the market tells us a lot of, a lot of things. If it's too high, we're not gonna get any action, and we definitely want to have some of these lots, have, have people inhabiting them, one way or another.
Yeah, the, there's a, to me, there's an issue of fairness here too that we have to address. You have some properties that had historically high-intensive uses that had extra parking spaces, and then you had some, some properties that were, you know, were warehouses, or were, were manufacturing, where you'd have one parking space for 1,000 square feet or 3,000 square feet, and if you have an assembly building, you've got one parking space for 50 square feet or, or 100 square feet. So you have these grandfathered-in historical, you know, dissimilar, you know, assets for, for properties that could be fairly similar. You know, if you're trying to put a, an assembly building in where you had a warehouse feature before, which is not all that uncommon, then you're gonna have, you're gonna need 50 parking spaces or something, you know, so it's, so addressing that, the, the program we have now really helps address that, that, that inequity that is inherent in that, in the grandfathered-in parking, and I like that about it. But I think there needs to be a, you know, you know, I think, you know, your point, Scott, about having a change of use in an existing structure, I think is, is fair to, to have, you know, the, to not have an in-loo fee for parking. You know, if you're going from a warehouse to a, you know, to a restaurant, I think it's, I think it's fair that you could put that into our business district. It's a, you know, it's an allowed use. You shouldn't be penalized just because the... You shouldn't be penalized just because the, the people before you, you know, the, the previous owners were a cannery or were a sale manufacturer or something. So, you know, maybe we do want to have that turn into more restaurants. Maybe we want it to have, turn it into a bar to increase the, maybe we want to have housing up on the second and third floor, you know, for all of those reasons. But when you get into the additional square footage, I think that's when you're, you're changing this, the, the footprint, you're changing this, you know, how that building relates to the, to the existing city. I think that's when we need to have our parking in force. And then if they can't provide parking on the lot, which mostly in the downtown and the Embarcadero, you're not going to be able to, then I think there needs to be a reasonable in lieu fee that they pay to, to put towards the Business Improvement District that is, you know, funded by the paid parking. So I think that goes into that and then that's a benefit to, to them and to their neighbors that would be visible. So, okay, Joe?
You know... Also added to this discussion, we need to acknowledge a cultureist change. Mike? All right. So with respect to restaurants, more people are prepared to, I'm sort of talking about the, the sort of factual reality of, I'm not talking about in lieu parking spaces, but I'm talking about how many parking spaces you physically need to operate this new kind of business. You know, more people are prepared to walk and walk further than in previous decades. In fact, part of the entertainment value of going to the restaurant is that brief walk back and forth. And with respect to hotels, you know, everybody in America has wheels on their suitcase now. And, and so it's no longer essential that you have a car and offload and all that. People are quite prepared to move a sizable distance to get to their accommodations. That's all I was going to say.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments?
One thing I was just thinking about when you guys were talking. So say, for example, you have a, a business that turns into a hotel and down on the Embarcadero and they propose a valet-type program or something where they're mitigating their parking concerns their own way. I think, I think staff should be, should have the authority to, you know, to look at that and maybe bring it to the commission, but, but to allow that as a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting point. I mean, we're, you know, we had Rose's Landing and we're going to lease parking spaces to them in one of our parking spaces to allow them to have the 10 hotel rooms upstairs. We have a couple of other projects that are going to come forward, they're probably in that location. So you have Rose's Landing, you have libertine and Off the Hook. All the libertine and Off the Hook are probably going to come forward and we're going to add another, I don't know, 16 hotel rooms plus the 10 for Rose's Landing. I mean, those folks were talking about working together to actually do something like, like Jesse was talking about. So, so yeah, I mean, I think that's a, that's a point well taken and we do have to be flexible to accommodate the uses that we have, especially the unique way things function down in the Embarcadero. I think it's, I think it's important. We are sort of riding some of that flexibility into the new code because the old code is fairly inflexible and has a lot of gray areas and holes in it. And so we're sort of trying to close the gaps, make it more clear and straightforward and then account for things that are unique that we have in the city. As opposed to taking a, you know, a code that was one that got approved at some other coastal city and we just said, oh, cool, you got that one. And we brought it here and we adopted it like several other communities do. And everybody that has them from that same time period has very similar policies up and down the coast, at least on the central coast, anyway.
Good. Did you get what you need, Scott?
I think this is all great, yeah. I think this is good input and it'll allow me to go back to, back to council. So, I owe them the report back and, like I said, when I was only going to give them 17 spaces, I pulled the plug on that right away.
Okay. Okay, at this, we move on to unfinished business, there is none. And then, finding commissioner comments. Let's start with Joe. You talked out yet?
Almost. I just, I, I received this letter concerning some of the businesses on measure, in measure, the measured area. And I'm kind of guessing at the background and what's really going on, but I was, you know, woefully sort of ignorant of, of the details of this. And I just wondered if we could learn a little bit more so I could, a little more background so I could kind of evaluate this letter.
Oh, is that the one that was drafted out?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't have a copy of it.
About dockside three and things like that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't have, oh, that's the one from Mark Tognazini. Yeah, okay. So I've seen that.
So...
Did you want to comment from Scott or do you want to deal with that later?
It's not, I mean, it's not an agenda item to discuss, so there's not much we can, I can really say about it. It's, all I would say is the things that he, that he's raising related to a lease site that already has its entitlements, it's a whole lot too late. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Jesse, you have any comments?
The only comment I have is just want to thank everybody for having trusted me and I hope I can fulfill everybody's expectations and anybody in the community, please feel free to obviously go through Scott when necessary, but I want to be here for everybody. I want to do what's best for this community. So, thank you for, thank you for the honor of allowing me to serve you.
About this time you're feeling it's been a big mistake. Okay, Michael. Richard? Any comments? Okay. Okay, I'm good. Oh, one, I guess, I just have another question for you, Scott, is, was there, I know it's not agendaized, but did I hear somewhere that we had approved retail marijuana retail space or something or where were we on that?
So, yeah, so we had the first reading of our marijuana ordinance at the last city council meeting. And the, and the, and the second reading, which is the final reading, will be next week, next Tuesday on the 14th. And so it'll, and there's a, the ordinance such as it is right now in its current format is on the city's website, front page, I think you can get the link to it. And really, the city's going to be regulating and allowing medical marijuana dispensaries, but not recreational at this point. We have to have the regulations in place by January 1 because that's when the state is supposed to have everything ready and we don't want to be behind them. We want everything ready to go. So here's the policies you have to follow. The, the council formed a subcommittee that worked with staff, including myself, the deputy city manager, city manager, police chief and fire chief to develop the ordinance. And the city attorney's office played a huge role in that, given that they have experience in other communities, to address whether, how we're going to deal with cultivation, personal cultivation, personal use, deliveries, all those types of things. And so, yeah, that's, that'll, that again is going to be at the, for the second reading and final reading hopefully, at the next council meeting so we can have it in place when January 1 rolls around. It, it will allow again for the creation of two dispensaries for medical, but it's going to give us a ga, a little bit of a timeframe to, it's not going to take place right away. It says, yeah, you, we're going to have it, here's our ordinance, but you can't submit those applications until July. One of the, where we're kind of going with that is, everybody's forced to sort of run around and react and maybe that's not the greatest way to do things. And so we take a little bit of a step back and kind of think through what we're doing and how we're doing it and looking at what other folks are doing and seeing the positives and negatives in case we do need to jump back in and change the ordinance. As it stands right now, it's not being housed in our zoning code. It's going to be housed in two other sections of the municipal code so that we have the ability and the flexibility to change it more readily than would be the case if we were in our zoning code, which would be the implementation plan for the local coastal program, which means coastal would be involved. And so any change we would do would be a year down the road, you know, from the city taking its action and going to coastal. So, that's kind of where it's at. Certainly there's a link on the front page of the website if you want to read through it. There's a lot of components to it, I didn't touch on all of them.
Okay.
Thanks. Hey, Scott, have you looked into like, I have a friend of mine from Colorado and, and, you know, there's cities, you know, like getting ideas that the cities that banned it and then all of a sudden, oh, a neighboring city that didn't and they're making, getting funds, so...
You mean like Grover Beach?
Pardon?
Grover Beach going to be the marijuana cannabis capital of the central coast, at least to start with?
But, I mean, even at a state, you know, looking at what the cities did and, and looking at what, what was successful there, you know?
We looked, we looked at all, we looked, we looked everywhere. Really, I mean, yeah, we, there's lessons learned out there. City attorney's office is fantastic because they represent a lot of other cities. And so, got to see what a lot of other folks were doing and they have the access to that. So they, they brought a lot to the table on their side and they were very well-versed. Chris Newmeyer, our deputy city attorney, really great. I mean, he was a, he was a, he was a wealth of information on that and was sort of the lead, primary lead, it wasn't Joe Panone, but it was, it was Chris and he did a fantastic job on that thing. And again, it was all the sitting around a room, kicking it around and, you know, working through all of the issues to try to come up with the regulations. So it was a, it was a big team effort there and council took, you know, it was taking a lot of time to go through it. They're certainly want to take, I think, kind of a conservative approach as they roll things out. They kind of thought, took the approach that we might be able to do more later, but it'd be neat, it'd be nice to see what more looks like, you know, as opposed to being the frontrunner and making all of the mistakes. We can have somebody else do that and go, oh, don't do that, got it. Don't do that, that works, you know, that type of thing. And so I think that's kind of where they came down on things was, you know, to take a measured approach in the initial stages and then see how things work and, you know, roll things out as, you know, as experience dictates elsewhere, I think, is kind of the point.
Okay. Scott, do you have any community?
So it's, it's looking like we might actually cancel our next meeting. I will know for sure probably by the end of tomorrow, but I don't have, it's, we have a whole bunch of projects that are sitting in a queue that we've sent stuff back out on and not received things back on. So, much applications sitting incomplete, which means at some point they're all going to probably come back in at the same time and then they'll have agendas with five and six items on them for you. But that's just kind of the nature, the cyclical nature of applications. So we might not have the meeting. There's a slight chance I do another one of these type things at it. It's just, I'm rapidly running out of time to put something together for it because of all of the information we're trying to get forward that we're, that's being run through us for the, for the general plan update right now. It's a little overwhelming.
I want to apologize for not researching this earlier, but my recollection is, do we have our first meeting of the year the second? Have you looked that far ahead?
It's on my, it's on my board in my office, but I don't, I might have to look at the calendar. Yeah, it might be, that might be, that might be correct. That actually sounds familiar.
Is, is, is that for real?
Yeah, it's the, it's the second.
Are you going to have a staff report for that?
I don't have any, we don't have anything on the next, a few agendas because we, again, we have a bunch of stuff sitting out there that we're waiting for responses on. So, I don't have anything slated into any of the, the next couple of meetings. There's going to be stuff that, that does come in, where we were anticipating getting some things in and what we got in was really not ready for primetime. And so, we ended up not being able to bring it forward. So we had two projects that that was the case for, so that's why we're canceling, probably going to cancel the next meeting unless I find something like this to bring to you.
Okay. So at this point, we'll adjourn to a, adjourn to the next, well, we irregularly scheduled finding commission at the, I'm assuming it's going to be at the Veterans Memorial Building here and we'll find out what time and what date. Okay. Thank you very much.